I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting in order, and for all of those who can't, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Resko, will you leave some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brittany for the roll call.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Great, thank you. Although it's not on the agenda, just like to take a moment and ask if we could have a moment of silence for nine eleven and the victories we lost twenty-two years ago. Great, thank you. Minutes of June fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from Monday, June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Great, thank you. Public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair of the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person, making us meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we'll not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure or participate, please attend in person. Thank you. Mr. Hutcherson, Mr. DeFazio is not available tonight, so we'll, I think we have a nice plaque for him back in the office?
Yes.
So we'll just go ahead and just deliver that to him. And but again, thank you to Mr. DeFazio for his years of service to the town Dalton and wishing him great continued success as he starts his new opportunity with Wacoona High School. We will miss him. Appointment ratifications, Ms. Hutcherson.
We have one. You remember the discussion about the zoning board appeals last time? We have received a letter of resignation from Steve Shutka and are ready to appoint Caleb Darby to be as a full member of the voting, a full voting member of the Board of Appeals.
Effective today?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appointment of Caleb Darby to, as a permanent member of the Board of Appeals, effective today, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and through when, Tom? To the next election.
The zoning board is appointed, I believe, the planning board is elected, yeah?
Board of Appeals is also elected, I believe. Yeah, until the next election.
Until the next election.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Here or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, Caleb. Any comments? I see that you're out there.
We may be on mute.
Oh, he's trying.
He's talking.
There he is.
I think our connection or his connection is not.
No, not on mute. Uh, hang on, let me check our sound levels here. Uh-oh.
How's that, Caleb, can you hear us? Nope.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
What again, what again? Uh, thank you. I will do my best to fill these shoes.
Excellent. Thank you for volunteering and stepping up, Caleb. Appreciate it. Are we good now, or are we still getting the feedback, huh?
I don't have meds like that at Woody's.
Test, test. Okay, that sounds good. All right. Again, thank you, Caleb. Um, moving on to the number eight, DPW, general update and ARPA pavement request. Mr. Hall? Yeah, you can slide a seat up. You can feel free to sit for sure, and that will help us get the folks at home to hear you.
Tom just wanted me to, you know, do a little update of things. So I kind of, I wrote a couple of things, everything I did. As you've noticed, we got the line painted in town, for sure. They painted all the W yellow's, the five lines in town were painted. Also, we got our crosswalks, everything else we've done about the school.
That's so cool.
And so it was great. It's nice to see it. I think next year, we purchased the paint sprayer at the end of this past fiscal year, so into June. So now, now we had, we'll be able to keep on top of it a little bit more, make things a little better. Uh, the spring time will be after again, make sure everything settles out the way to fall.
Yeah, I did get a, oh, I got a couple of things. I got some great comments about the new sidewalk painting, and I joked with Zinkie that we accidentally bought a hundred gallons of glue. We have to fix that issue, but, um, the residents, also a neighbor of mine who's, goes to, you know, St. Agnes, is that crosswalk there, I know it's a state road, but can we do something similar because the state's not maintaining those? And he actually saw somebody almost get hit this past.
Post office, the post office?
No, no, right by the church.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right across the church when coming out the main. And then I think it's all the churches have a crosswalk similar.
Yeah, I can ask them to what they have to say, actually.
Because like when you drive up through Lee, all there is is painted, right? So, but it's definitely a, he almost saw somebody get hit this past weekend. Okay.
I actually think, a couple of months ago, I asked Tom to reach out to the state about doing the crosswalks.
They painted a couple. They painted the post office, I believe, the owner of the paint. They did cover painted, because I, Tom asked me to call too.
Okay.
I do know it did do that one.
Yeah, and then you get the yellow's that kind of in these, you know, high traffic areas, especially on the weekends.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you both.
Also, we started sidewalk repairs. We got the, we did a section by Crane Road between two entrances. That one we put back blacktop. We're just trying a couple of different things to see how we can, if we like that way, it's going to become cheaper for us to do a little bit of paving as opposed to paving some sidewalks, because concrete's definitely a little more work. Tomorrow, well, we started a little bit today, but over here in Field Street, we're going to pull a bunch of sections out tomorrow, and that's when we're going to do this fall, we're going to try to get done.
Oh, right, right over here?
Right over here, like just.
Where all the grass has grown on the sidewalk?
Not that, not, that's first.
Oh, that's first, okay, yeah.
So we'll keep going towards, that's been one we've gotten complaints from since I've been back.
Okay.
So it's been my number, pretty much, one of the only, I mean, they're all bad. There's a lot of bad sidewalk, but just want to get it repeatedly. So we're going to be back, didn't care. So we're going to see how that goes. It's about the same distance, same length, so I'm kind of keeping a budget of time and everything, so I know how much, so we can just.
Sure.
And then hopefully over the winter, I plan on trying to, when the snow's melted, at least take a good look at all the sidewalks and come up with a plan, which ones we should be tackling, you know, next. And we figured maybe start down here by the senior center, around here, the park, and then start branching out a little bit. We'll see.
As a suggestion, the Pleasant Street from Maine up to High.
Yep.
Of course, we know that, you know, Zinkie's is there, but past Zinkie's in particular, as you head up towards High, it's pretty bad.
Okay. The, do I take the Zinkie side or?
Yeah.
The, speaking of, on that, just kind of made me think, the, the Safe Streets Grant, I saw our announcement of that a week ago or so, that that's now open, or? Can we leverage some of that, especially for a lot of the walk, students who are walking to repair us, our sidewalks?
We can look into it.
Potentially?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a thought. I don't know, I don't know if it's, if falls under the, that grant or not, Tom, I have no idea, but I would assume Safe Streets for Kids, but.
I don't know if the sidewalks come under that. It's for, it's mostly for pedestrians, a lot of pedestrians on streets and bike lanes.
Bike lanes, yeah.
I don't know whether particular priorities are, sometimes department priorities are a little more narrow than.
Sure.
The full range of what I'm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Also, we started catch bases cleaning the last week. So you see, we went to the truck to do that this year. We did it last year as well. We have to do it every year because by state mandate, we have to clean catch bases once a year. So we started that process, so you'll see a random big white truck around. And I think one of the other reasons we're here tonight too is we got all of our bids for Sleepy Hollow, Winklewell, Frederick. So that's, can be done. We'll see if we can get it done this year. That's, you know, the next item, but.
Okay.
The finals there. But highway wise, that's what we're doing right now. We're trying, we'll be out, we're out patching, trying to get a bunch of things done. We did some rain up by Wacoona Falls on our side of the road. We got last week, got that kind of an order. That stayed pretty well over the head and rain on the weekend. Parks, basketball courts got paved this summer. We're trying to just, the money's not quite there yet to pay them, we'll have them want to pay them. It's, we're trying to get, raise a little funds. We talked to CRA, Dustin, we're, kind of between him and I, we're trying to get everything together for that. So we did it all painted and lined.
What's, like, what's the estimated cost on the?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand to line the basketball court?
Their paints, they're going to paint the whole court, like four or five layers of paint. It's also the whole thing, like, it'll be really nice when it's done. The line, and they're going to put, on one side, they're going to paint pickleball courts on them as well. So maybe a little more multipurpose. And CRA already has, I don't know, called mobile pickleball court nets, like ones you can, you know, take away. We usually love the boy.
Nice.
So, yeah, so that was, we're working on that now. We're just trying to get the funding together for that. We just did all woodchips on our playgrounds, got that all done, the fall zones. Our projects, we worked a lot, uh, pine for the last year, we're going to work on the channel a little bit this fall, trying to get the baseball field straightened out a little bit, it's in rough shape, the Belusha Field, so we're going to work on that a bit. And then hopefully next spring, we're going to work on the basketball court pretty much, because that's just.
Okay, yeah.
Awful. Usually they pave bad, the basketball courts are a hundred years old, which is needs a lot of attention. I think it's a little bit lucky sometimes, and hopefully that'll happen. And then cemetery wise, we're, we're working, we just actually started today. We went back up to East Main Street Cemetery, started repairing the old stones, which we usually try to do at least for like a month or a year. So we went back, starting up there. Actually started today. The organ is up there anyways, so we'll get that done. We'll tree work, fix up some roads in the cemeteries. It's, we've been keeping in order, a lot of work to do there. And then sewer, we just opened, Tom and I, the bid opening last week for the sewer, big sewer repair project on Thursday, Thursday it was. So we got just time bombs going through the two bids, see who wins that. And it's going to be a little lower than we had, you know, thought was good. So we'll find out how that goes. Probably next week or so, we'll have that all figured out. Otherwise, you know, sewer wise, we're up every week, a few days a week, maintaining everything out there. It's always a, it's a busy, it's a busy one. We're supposed to have seventy, seventy-five man a week in sewer system, so it takes a lot.
Seventy-five a week, wow.
We've strayed out between the performance, some of his minds and this one's.
Yeah.
Administrative assistant, and also one operator who's forty hours a week on the work. So kind of, yeah, it's a lot, did a lot of work there. And then last but not least, the transfer station. This seems to be going along good. We've got, as of today, I went over and looked, we got five hundred and seventy-five permits, so we're right, there'll still be somewhere coming. We'll probably be a little bit more than last year, I think. Thirty-five recycled, the only sticker, which I think is more than we had last year.
Yes, if I recall correctly, that's right, yeah.
I think it was around thirty last year. But everything's going pretty good there. The Northern Berkshire Solid Base has been, we've been in contact, I don't know, two, three times a week, organizing different things. Just had a bunch of things about recycling batteries over the weekend. I actually worked on Thursday night, so we're going to add it for that. But it's, it's been great. This is great out for us, and I think it's all over there. So.
Bud, with the, where are all the brushes over there? Do you have to have a permit to use that?
I hope that as long as you're a resident of town.
Okay.
You can do that. We have the attendant over there to brush, but usually, like, if he does, he knows most people going there, so it's all part of it. If he doesn't.
Just show him their license or whatever, okay. Thank you.
He's pretty good, he's pretty, he loves that job. He's, he gives me some later.
I was wondering though, now that the transfer station attendant is a town employee, do we need both there, you know? Just a question, not, not.
It's tough, because Brian being, you know, the transfer.
Yeah.
It's hard for him to keep an eye on. Our problem's always contractors, Brandon, brushing leaves, and what leaves, chip the bottom, I mean, that's another story. But it, that was our issue, was contractors coming. It's not a problem anymore since we've had him there. So it's definitely saved us man hours, I guess I would say, but it's.
Yeah, recall that came up like last season, and we said, okay, keep it separate and see how it goes, and it seems like it's working.
Yeah, and it's been, it's been pretty good, you know, and we'll see, you know, as it goes along, maybe it'll come to a point where we don't need anybody, and we'll do great.
Reallocate those hours.
Right, right.
Within the department, not get rid of them.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Add some communication with Mr. Hutcherson himself and Green Committee around the heat and for DPW.
Yeah.
How's that, is that, are we on track there for heat this?
We got the, last night, actually, we emailed like eight o'clock last night, Phil's plans for the heat.
Okay.
So that we should now, actually, Tom and I are meeting tomorrow to go over that to get it out.
Okay.
So hopefully, hopefully soon enough, we'll be sure it's cool.
Yeah, nice. All right, you spent an hour in your office talking. I see you guys need heat. It's freezing my tail off, but, okay, that's good. Okay. Any questions for Bud? We want to get to the next one, the, the ARPA funded question. Any questions on the update? Okay, all right, we'll move to the ARPA pavement request. Who wants to walk this, walk us through, see Bud or Tom?
Tom probably, he's got the number two.
I can do that. The, the original budget for this year was based on paving Pleasant Street, and then priority for Frederick Sleepy Hollow, Winklewell came along and said, okay, that's fine. But between a little bit more in-depth work that needs to be done up there and the skyrocketing cost of paving materials, we had, we weren't quite fully funded for doing those three streets. So I, we originally started thinking, well, maybe we can, you know, use the, use the money that we had, we put forward for the paper compactor, because there were, you know, we thought there was a grant available for that. There, the grant that we were hoping used for that does not cover equipment, basically. So we were unable to, to get the, that thirty thousand dollars even applied for, let alone have a, have a successful, right, application. So until Thursday afternoon, we thought we would need, you know, we thought we were in a hole, twenty-three, twenty-six thousand dollars. And then the sewer bids came in. And as you know, half of the sewer bids, three hundred and eighty thousand, were, were dedicated from ARPA funds. So the, the bids came in, and, and as Bud mentioned, Heinlein is looking over the bids to see whether the low bid is actually a good bid. But even if it's not, the high bid would still leave us at least eighty-five thousand dollars in extra ARPA funds that had been allocated to that that we don't have to use for that. So what I'd like to do is propose that adding the remaining amount from the road engineering that had been allocated and using the borrowing authorization that we already did. And originally, that was for rewiring town hall and a town meeting. We got that changed to town hall and other town buildings. So the fourth, there's four thousand dollars from that, that gives us six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And we also have eight thousand seven hundred and three unspent from the paving that has already been approved, allocated. So that, that totals fifteen thousand, five fifty-three. The minimum we need to do the paving of the three roads is about forty thousand dollars, which means we're about twenty-four thousand dollars short. But we have much more than that available now in the sewer repairs allocation. So what I'd like to suggest is putting those, you know, kind of cleaning up those other accounts as much as we can and adding, you know, I, I said, well, what about twenty-five thousand? That doesn't leave us much of a contingency. And we were thinking it would be helpful to have another five thousand dollars in case there was some extra work that we could do during the project. So if, if we could allocate thirty thousand of what is now allocated to the sewer repairs, to paving, that would more than take care of what we know it's going to cost and leave us about six thousand dollars for any overages or contingency for our Sleepy Hollow, Frederick, Winklewell. So we're, we're in a phase now where we're just kind of cleaning up the allocations that we've made, because they all came in a little bit less, or we found other funding sources, so we can wiggle down all of that and get this current paving done at this time. There will be more adjustments as we, you know, get final figures for all of these projects. But that would do it for now.
I have a few questions, but defer to the board. Any questions? No? Ken or Mark?
I have, the one question I have is for the sewer repairs, and we planned for seven hundred and sixty thousand, but revised it to three hundred and eighty.
Yeah, the other half came from sewer stabilization.
So sewer three, the.
Sewer stabilization, which has been approved by town meeting already, then we have savings on the ARPA side.
If I had, are we allowed, if the fiber ring, the fiber ring overage, that was, that was a project or expense approved by town meeting, correct, from borrower and authorization? So I don't think we can re-deploy that outside of a bar and authorization, true?
Town meeting authorized, there was a two hundred thousand dollar borrowing.
Right.
Originally.
For a specific purpose?
For IT rewiring town hall, which meant IT wiring in town hall. And then the purpose of that got changed to IT wiring for all town building. So that covers the fiber work that we're doing. So we can, we can use what had been committed from ARPA for the fiber ring. We can use that borrowing for, to take care of. Because actually, the, the IT wiring for town hall is going to come in way less. We're not going to use, we're going to, we're not going to use anywhere near two hundred thousand dollars for rewiring town hall.
Well, it was rewiring in security purposes.
So, so it, it's, it's, we're really going to use minimal, a minimal amount of that authorization for rewiring. So we might as well use, we might as well save as much ARPA as we can.
Well, that, it was, it was, I, I want to make sure, we got, maybe go back to look at the authorization. If I recall, it was really driven by security gaps, and that includes IT infrastructure, includes any hardware, PCs, or things of that nature to get to a certain security standard, that we found gaps in our security audit. So as long as all those gaps are completely closed and addressed, then I think we're good. But if not.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we're, we're absolutely up to date with security.
And we, we haven't had an updated security audit yet. I guess it's my second.
Oh, okay.
Question on that. So that's kind of part of that process. If I recall correctly, we're going to close the gaps and do another audit, and then have the auditor tell us that our gaps are closed. If not, then we tweak whatever we need to tweak to close. So I want to make sure we don't lose those funds until we know what our second, our follow-up audit says.
Yeah, that, that should be fine. As far as the hardware goes, we're completely set. I believe we're, we've done everything we need to do with security so far, and I think an audit will.
Yeah, so.
Will bear that out.
Yes, I'm suggesting.
I mean, we're, we're, out of the two hundred thousand dollar authorization, I have not spent nearly half that. So I can't see us spending.
Right, we want to touch it until we have a second audit. That's just my opinion. I would defer to the board.
In order to address your concerns, why don't we just bump it up to thirty-five thousand and not touch, touch the, that four thousand? If you're saying that the bids are under thirty, eighty-five thousand dollars under it, then why don't we just bump it up to thirty-five thousand? Yeah, well, you can get that voted on, get that, that stuff moving, and it addresses your concern, Joe.
The fiber ring overage was ARPA. What you were suggesting is that there's funds that could be reallocated in that IT bucket, is what I understood.
Well, it's not the IT budget, it's the, it's the special article for town hall rewiring.
Right, which has nothing to do with paving.
No.
Right, so we shouldn't touch anything in that bucket?
Well, no, but that's, but, but the four thousand dollars could have something to do with paving if you put it towards that.
Right, so it has nothing to do with that particular authorization, it has to do with how we authorized in ARPA the, for the fiber.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to separate the two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's just, it would be one way to put money towards, and we were scrambling for everything we could get at that point. This was all before the, the sewer bits came in.
So if I understand this correctly, we just do not need to allocate the ARPA funds for fiber ring overage? That's really what it comes down to?
Yeah.
We don't need to allocate that one?
Right.
Because it's covered by borrowing authorization, which we're still way under budget currently? It can be covered by that?
Yes.
Within that scope of that?
Yeah.
Project?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, are you comfortable with forward with reallocating those funds, or do you want to just keep it on the list and?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as, you know, you can move the fiber ring, fiber ring deeds into that other budget, that's for sure.
Yeah, and, and I can get a, I can move on that second audit pretty quickly, and we'll, we'll know where we stand with it.
How, do we have a, do we have a closeout of the town hall renovation and all the, all the costs there? I know we put some alloc, we put some contingency, town hall renovation contingency of a hundred and fifty, and we, it looks like it's a hundred and eight thousand revised, but still in reserved.
I believe we'll still have twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars left.
And that's not considered a miscalculation right now?
But, no, no, because we don't have final figures on that. We're still working on final responsibilities for certain damages.
And so this is Frederick, Sleepy Hollow.
Winklewell.
Winklewell. What was, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I still got lots of questions on our street plan, which I've been asking for, is the list.
Yeah.
I still want to see one.
So essentially, they ask us thirty thousand from a couple of different sources on this ARPA list, we're reallocating thirty thousand.
Just for, just for those three streets, right?
New paving, call it new paving.
Any streets being bumped?
No, we want Pleasant to do that, and you guys chose that in the spring.
Okay, all right, so this is kind of like. Okay, all right, so this is kind of the original plan, it's just these three?
Yeah, this is the original plan.
So the original plan and paving costs go up? Pretty much, that's all right, okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Are there any other, again, there's no questions too.
I didn't bring a pen. Do you think I should be specific to where it's all coming from or as recommended?
As recommended.
Okay. Mister Chairman, I move that we allocate thirty thousand dollars of Arba funding, reallocating from the three areas as recommended by the town manager to additional new paving.
Is there a second?
One second.
Motion, second, any discussion? You hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries, thank you, bud.
I have one more question, bud. Bud, the roads in Greeters Park. I know they're, you know, they're low priority roads and everything, but they, some of them roads haven't been touched in close to thirty years. And they're total wreck. Is there any way we can address them in their future? Because.
We can, you know, we can look into, anything that's wanted, we can do. We did street scan this year. I went by the street scan site, which was, number one was Pleasant Street. Number two was where we're going now, Sleepy Hollow, Frederick and such. So we just bumped that way. Or, I'm sorry, Orchard Road was the first. That's out, that grant's out, we should find out in October, hopefully, we'll get that grant. That's a million, million dollar grant, we'll look at that. But Pleasant Street was the next one, which was pretty much, it wasn't the very end. It does segments, the street scan does segments, it goes. So it was from, well, from the beginning up to Franklin Street. Was what it wanted to do. I probably would just finish it. But then we bumped to do those other ones. I can look, I'm, I'm not sure after doing what we're doing now. Can't remember off the top of my head what's next on the list.
Yeah, they shouldn't be too expensive compared to the other roads, right? Even if those are just straight repaving.
Yeah, so some of those, we should, we should definitely be able to do next, with Jack and I's funds.
Okay.
We have, or if, you know, Tom will decide to put some money towards those roads.
I think it's, I think it's really, maybe goes to our strategy session that we have to have, but really important to look at our street status, as there's a lot of red in that street scan report. And Bud, you talked about crack sale and things of that nature, which the report recommends, which I don't think we're budgeted for, you know, this year. So there's another recommendation there to say, okay, are there additional funds we need to go ask the town for above and beyond our, you know, what we get from the state, which is two twenty-five a year, maybe?
Yeah, most.
Right? So, and then beg, borrow and steal for grant money along with that. While we have, you know, what that street scan report shows us is a lot of, a lot of roads that need repair.
Looking at the Sleepy Hollow projects, roughly to do that project, it's about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to do that. So, you know.
And those neighbors have that truck turnaround situation, that coming up, Grant Hall and the turnaround.
Extra toll ride through there.
Is that what deteriorated the road to something?
It was, that road was, I think, accepted from the developer back in the day and they didn't do a very good job inspecting it before they accepted it. So the roads, it's just all, it's just a mess over there. But what we're doing is kind of grind it up and make the road better before we did it.
You'll see some of that road and some of those neighbors, that, that road's actually, the driveway sit above the road. You know, because the road's, you know, crushed in so much, there could be like one or two inches on that. That would be a difference. But I think, you know, as long as we can squeeze some money to do another road out, then we can figure it out, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Bud?
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
That's okay.
Yep.
Have we, have we thought about some sort of like a foot traffic study? Oh, this is Todd looking, twenty-eight Curtis, sorry, I should identify. A foot traffic study for, to see where the biggest need for sidewalk improvements would be? Oh, yeah. Technology. Do you want me to come up a little bit, so I can hear you a little bit? Sure, I'll just talk softer. Then I'll go home and look at that. I, that's what I was talking early.
Yeah.
Is more content this winter, because we have not, we don't have any to do sidewalks. Is that feasible? I mean, is it a cost-effective way to look at it or? Something I ought to look into a little bit more, but I haven't looked into as much.
We haven't done an official, to answer your question, we haven't done an official study on sidewalk, you know, patterns or pedestrian patterns like we did with street scan, looking at those, those stats of the streets. Right, so, but.
So maybe you thought of it, because you had.
Yeah, because it's a question that says, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna fund, we're going to authorize this funding through town meeting and address our sidewalks. And one of the questions was, what, what's the list? What are we stuck to? Everybody has a different sidewalk to be repaired. And it's kind of starting somewhere and then working our way through that, you know? I think you're taking that into account a little bit now. Because you buy the schools, you buy the, some of the high traffic areas, but not a, a, a formal audit or process. But it's a good idea.
That's next to your kind of the thing. That's the work on this winter, I'm trying to figure something out.
Thank you again, bud, appreciate it, yep. So you start with Sleepy Hollow tomorrow, one is, no.
Get the shovel out.
Yeah.
It's gonna be raining.
Yeah. Mr. President, are we ready for the presentation?
Is Wiley on?
I see her, yeah.
Looks like it.
Wiley, are you ready to join us? Just one second. Our microphone is not working here, it says. Please check the connection or use a different one. Wiley, can you test your audio? Do you see that she's unmuted?
Yes.
Can you turn your audio up at least? I don't know why it says this isn't working. Was this working before, do you think?
I don't, I don't know if it was working with Caleb or not when he was talking.
We could hear Caleb, bud. When we talked, there was a big feedback.
That was cause of feedback.
Yeah, so it was working, it was working. It says, our mic, this microphone is not working.
You want to try and plug, try and plug that microphone into Brittany's laptop? Might be something just wrong with that connection. And then I'll do the general IT thing, we'll reboot.
Of course.
Yeah, sounds good.
No doubt.
Wiley, is your volume on?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Okay, there we go, all right.
Yes.
Hi Wiley, thanks for joining us tonight.
Sure, sorry about, I know it's taken us a while.
No, it's okay. Just want to do one thing for our friends at Dalton Community TV here. If we can turn this laptop around, if you want to zoom in on that screen, you want to do that?
And I can, I can try to make the speakers one full screen, but I am now stuck in some kind of Zoom meeting not responding, oh. She's still on there?
I'm here.
My Zoom ceased to function here.
That's okay, Tom, we can use Brittany's, or she can turn around, so then we can zoom in on that laptop, if that's okay? Does that work here? Okay. So we'll have a copy of the presentation as well.
It would help if you could make it so that the speaker, the view as speaker gets the big screen.
I'm waiting for my.
Yeah, Wiley, do you have slides on your side to present, so we can?
I do.
Okay, if you can go ahead and, if you go ahead and start that and then.
It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
You're the host?
Yeah, I can't, I don't be able to share yet. Okay, great. No? Yeah, there's attention, that'd be great.
Cars covered being a.
Recording in progress.
And the garage was so many pieces behind us. They were pretty good.
Yeah, they will. That was the bass player for them, but I had the clip. I was too busy with another man.
Um, I don't know, I could email this to someone, but I don't know if you can get it. You want to acknowledge you and talk about this last.
Oh, this is good. You can label it, screen sharing?
Thank, thank. I think, I think. Words, words heard in the rapid. Hang on, my second.
Sir.
Why is this always on your phone? That's, that's.
Again, can you just stop your share and change your settings to loud? No. Participants to show.
Here we go, here we go.
Yeah?
Can you share it?
Share it. Uh, you sit in. Hold on a minute. Okay, so, are we ready to see the screen?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. All right, well, when I started with the economic development plan for regional economic conditions and seeing that we're not that good, um, we have finished, we created a, you know, a year-long and so, and so a small year process of working on the twenty twenty-three economic development conference and economic development strategy, which, um, the first regional economic conditions are part of the government and to the economic development administration, which is especially important, given COVID during the lockdown, the pandemic, and the various economic challenges. You know, how does a region not just have to back after a setback like COVID, but how we, you know, emerge from disaster, how do we prevent to the disaster ability and kind of preventing the best, you know, warning systems and, you know, creating the temperature of the region and expect that something bad could happen, climate change and inflation, you know, employer leaving, et cetera. How do you try to prevent that downfall from happening as much as possible? You know, right away while it's happening and then fall back, hopefully, disaster. So this says, if you have, you're not familiar with it, it basically had to track regional economic conditions. We either required certain chapters or sections of the government that we do SWAT analysis with the existing statistics, we've been given opportunities and threats, we follow the strategic plan actually based on that performance management tool that we're using. And then again, the COVID, the government really asked us to expand our resilience to chapter. And that's where I was writing, because in the past, the RPC were like any, you know, and then in the agencies, the regional planning conditions, they hadn't focused so much on resiliency because it wasn't a sort of buzzword at the time, and it is now. So we look at Dalton, you know, as a sort of mini community, as a mini exemplar of economic conditions in the region. You know, we see that you are business-based with large and small employers. You've got some historic homes, you're walkable downtown, really valuable. You've got a high-rise, a forest cover to mitigate climate threat, access to open space and, you know, kind of small-town atmospheric sense of community, which is, you know, not for nothing. I don't know how much people follow the news, but loneliness is a really big concern in our country right now. People being isolated, it contributes to things like opioid abuse, to suicide rates, to drinking. And these are all really destructive to communities, they have a real ripple effect. So, you know, having a community where people want to live, where they feel welcome and included in that community, there's activities and things for them to do so that people don't become isolated is actually quite important in terms of resiliency. But there are challenges, again, as we all know, income is a big one in the Berkshires. We know that it's really hard to attract and retain people here because sometimes we can't pay the wages, competitive wages that people can get in other places. Loss of, again, manufacturing jobs and an increase in, you know, retail and hospitality, which, you know, there's sort of always been kind of the backbone of the Berkshires. But they're not always the highest paying jobs and we know that more and more people are saying, I don't want to work in those industries and that's really tough as we lose kind of that small-town character, we have vacant storefronts and things like that. We need a lot more housing, we all know that, I don't need to reiterate it, you know about yourself. But one of the things that we, you know, need something more creatively about is rehabbing existing houses, possibly changing zoning to allow for accessory dwellings and other ways that, again, you could do two, kind of kill two birds with one stone, maybe help older people stay in their houses long, but not be so isolated and create more housing, which we desperately need and starter housing, maybe for, you know, again, someone who is working a retail job and they don't want to have to drive three or four towns away to, you know, waitress at a diner or something. Public transportation is really important, again, as we think about climate change and we think about lowering the cost of living for people, we know gas prices have risen. So the more opportunities we have to make biking a reality for people or just shared rides and other kinds of things to make it easier for people to get places, that's really important. And again, aging population, where we really have to think about how do we attract younger people to the Berkshires. Again, I don't, you know, don't have to reread all of this. One of the things we have to create is a vision. And so our vision, like your vision and your master plan, you know, we think about, again, creating a high quality of life, making our community affordable, inclusion and safe. Again, being a community that nurtures and supports each other. And then having in place, again, the housing, the healthcare, the jobs, et cetera, that make this a place that people can, you know, not just come and, you know, get some experience and skills or come to retire, but actually come, raise your family, stay here and be here throughout the lifespan. One of the things we think about in the resiliency framework is a model that we adapted from a rural economy researcher Brian Dafson out of the University of Nebraska. And it's just a very simple framework, but it just says, you know, resilient economies start with resilient people, like I was saying before, people are on the streets, they're not employed, if they're struggling, that leads to a less safe community, which leads to a place people don't want to live, which leads to businesses leaving and a distracted economy. So the goals that we came up with for this is, again, healthy people, number one. Number two, resilient communities, again, that can withstand or prevent, withstand and recover quickly from economic shocks, a future-ready workforce, so important that our schools are really training kids to understand what the jobs of the future are. And especially as we have more hybrid work, so that people don't have to leave the community necessarily to work. If they can stay here and work remotely or in a hybrid way, then that's a real advantage. Again, strong business environment, this is for the entire county. And again, robust infrastructure that allows small businesses to come and stay and grow and for larger employers to think about the region as being business friendly. In our SWAT analysis, again, we'll go through all of these things, but, you know, we looked at our strengths as a region, you know, that we do have a strong brand identity in the Berkshires. So, you know, you can talk to somebody in Colorado and if you say the Berkshires, they probably have heard of it in some form or fashion, have a positive association with it. Again, that's not for nothing, that's super important. How do we build on that? Again, with our cultural amenities, outdoor recreation became super important during COVID. It's something we're really ramping up and the RPC is working on an outdoor rep landing page and website that will really help people understand the diversity of opportunities here for outdoor rep. Again, weaknesses. Again, weaknesses, broadband is something we'll be working with Dalton with very soon, um, and other communities, low wages, housing, et cetera. Opportunities, again, we saw some in migration during COVID, that's great, how do we build on it? How do we, again, um, build on our outdoor rep, uh, assets, um, make, uh, increased coordination across towns? Again, if towns are small, they don't have the money to pay for a town manager or a finance person, how do we, you know, join forces across towns to make that more affordable and get the best people to stay here and do the work? Um, threats, childcare is a big one that we learned about, you know, there's not enough, it's not affordable. Again, if we want people to stay here and have families here, we have to make childcare, uh, something that they can easily access. Um, future work changes, a really interesting report that came out during, while we're working on this, the State's Commonwealth Future Work Report. Highly recommend people take a look at it, it really talks about the potential threats to retail and hospitality. Again, as it goes to, um, you know, more automation and things like that, um, how do we keep people employed? And how do we retrain people, we're living here, so they don't feel like they have to leave if they get, you know, um, the split acts out of a retailer hospitality job, how do we find and retrain them for new opportunities? Um, and lots of farmland is an interesting one, again, there's a lot of farming, most of it in South County admittedly, um, but it's an important part, again, of our identity, um, agrotourism is another big opportunity, and, um, we want to figure out how to keep our farmers here. So some of the objectives, again, um, won't reiterate all of these, again, expanding housing rehab, broadband, shared services, so we're going to track staff, uh, walkable downtowns, um, you know, increased rail, again, another big one that we're looking at, that we really advocated for, the East-West Rail, virtual flyer, redeveloping mills, um, and we have been building out Berkshire Funding Focus as another standalone website, but through the R P C that helps, um, nonprofits and towns, uh, look for funding and help them move through the funding process, they can get funded more easily. Um, we, again, when we first started the S E D, we came to your town, like we did many other towns, to ask you, you know, what did you see as your, uh, what, what were your SWOT analysis for your own community and those have been integrated into the S E Ds? Um, and so we have taken those into consideration. Um, again, some of the resiliency risks, uh, people, you know, high rates, uh, compared to the state, uh, cancer, opioid overdoses, suicide, obesity, which, you know, again, given the nature all around us, opportunities for exercise, um, not as bad as it, it's not a huge difference, so that's good. Um, drinking, again, not as much of a difference from the, from the state, um, but smoking, we can lower, you know, um, and again, that, uh, the heart disease and the opioid rates, again, very concerning. Um, again, resiliency risks, uh, climate change, again, everything we can do to make our towns green communities, to look at hazard mitigation plans, to, um, look at stormwater infrastructure, you know, we had some flooding recently in, um, Adams and, I think North Adams, um, during the last big, you know, we've always known all the rain that we've got in the summer. Um, that's, those things, you know, can continue. Um, there are communities, you know, south of us that are, uh, that are too hot and uncomfortable to live in. Um, we're, you know, our snow season, as it gets shorter, that will affect our outdoor rep industry, you know, there are ski resorts here, um, that are really scared that they may lose, um, their competitive edge to Vermont or Maine or other places, uh, just because the weather isn't, uh, cooperating anymore. Um, again, walkable bike haul downtowns, et cetera. Um, on the economy side, uh, we want, again, more women, veteran minority owned businesses, uh, helping them. He supported small businesses are the backbone of many communities, um, immigrants are often the, um, the people who start those small businesses. Um, you know, I know right now there's a huge migrant, uh, issue and crisis, and we're, you know, trying to figure out how to house people and feed people, clothe people, but the sooner those people can work, the sooner they can actually strengthen a lot of rural communities. You want a great, great example of that, look at Lancaster, Pennsylvania, predominantly Amish and Mennonite community, incredibly diverse community now, they've got a food hall, um, that has showcases food from all over the world, and that's because they, um, are a really diverse community now, the way they never were. Um, look at supply chain disruptions for this certain businesses, and again, um, for how do we protect ourselves from cyber threats, uh, climate change shutdowns and other things that can affect our economy. Um, resiliency recommendations, looking at expanding food access, increasing chapter 90 funding for pilot. Um, you know, a lot of communities are shouldering the burden of state owned lands without getting the compensation they deserve from the state. We really need to advocate for that with our new world commissioner, Andy Goby, and others. Um, looking at, uh, for the economy, again, offering training to at risk employers, and supporting the expansion of, um, uh, community, of, uh, like vocational training at the high school level, um, upskilling and re-skilling, uh, older workers, so that, again, people, you know, have, they live longer, they will have multiple careers throughout their life, um, rather than seeing the, uh, ending of one career or job path as a failure. Um, we need to really talk about it as like the phases of life, and that people may have different jobs, different careers. I can speak for myself, I'm definitely on, not my first career as an urban planner, and I couldn't be happier. Um, but it wasn't what I started out in college, and as we all get to know ourselves better and understand what our strengths and weaknesses are, um, we can become actually more aligned with who we are and do work that's really meaningful to us. So what's next, um, again, there'll be annual updates to the S E Ds that we'll be working on with our S E D committee. We'll follow up on priority projects, um, those are ones that are identified through an outreach process that often, um, not exclusively are infrastructures and kinds of programming, um, that we think will really strengthen the region and, again, continuing our conversation with municipal stakeholders. If you want to learn more about the S E Ds, again, go to the, uh, the R P C website, um, we did some really fun social media related to it. Um, I don't know if I can put it in the chat, um, I think with, um, with the open meeting law, I can't do that, but, um, there's a story map on our G I S, um, that we created, uh, some, uh, YouTube videos for the high school student who, um, goes to Pittsfield, uh, sorry, goes to Taconic, actually, excuse me. Um, and we made some fun, uh, YouTube videos with her, so we really tried to expand the way we, um, introduced the S E Ds to more audiences, to more young people, to more diverse audiences, and we, again, the, this S E D is, I think, maybe 50 pages long. Um, it's not a hundred plus page document that's unreadable, we really wrote it and styled it in a way that made it, um, accessible to as many people as possible. So with that, um, I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you for, uh, I was gonna play a just.
No, that one's up there.
This one also, okay. So you can see the, the wood. There we go, there's the, yes, okay. A great, great presentation, thank you. Um, any questions from the board?
I just have one comment.
Mr. Bishop.
Did you ever talk to anybody that was used to be on the Grow Dalton, um, committee? They're trying to reorganize again.
You guys are new to it, if someone's asking a question, you can't hear.
They're trying to reorganize again.
Yes.
Okay. Try again.
Okay, have you ever talked to anybody on the Grow Dalton Committee?
On the what, Dalton Committee?
Grow Dalton Committee, it's a group of business people and townspeople that get together and they develop a bunch of ideas for our town. And they're just trying to reorganize again, and they used to, they had a bunch of great ideas there. And I think it'd be helpful if you talked to some of them.
Um, yeah, that would be great, I, I know, I myself didn't, you know, Tom was on, is on our S E D committee, so he certainly may have, um, you know, had conversations with them, um, and I will be, you'll be seeing me again because I'm working also with Tom on the Digital Equity Plan for Dalton, so for sure, we'd love to talk with them for that. Um, but the S E D's meetings are open to the public, um, and so, um, anyone is welcome to, uh, listen in and comment, et cetera.
Bobby, if you get me the contact information.
I would start with John Kelly.
Great.
Okay.
The, uh, I was, I was surprised and, and delighted, um, on the, uh, on the resili- resiliency risk of people, that teen pregnancy is not on that list, because it was a big issue, I think, in oh four and oh five, and it's come down significantly, which is, which is great to see, and we kind of look at some of these other statistics, just from a health perspective, um, the opioid issues and the suicide, uh, issues, uh, per hundred. Is there further discussion in that around behavioral health, extension of services or programs, uh, from that side?
Yeah, it's a great question, I mean, um, I, you know, off the top of my head, I don't recall that was like specifically in our recommendation, you know, it is an economic report, so we may not have, like, gotten entirely into the weeds about that. Um, I think it's a great point to raise and, um, one that, um, I'm happy to go back to the report and take a deeper dive and look into. Um, I know, you know, we certainly had conversations with, uh, Berkshire Medical Center and BIM and South County Volunteers in Medicine and other folks. Um, but we know a lot of this work is really often done by laypeople, you know, churches and librarians and other people who are often, um, family members, of course, who are often, um, you know, the first, uh, point of contact for people who are in, who are in crisis. Um, and you probably have seen, hopefully, around town and we're not necessarily in Dalton, but certainly driving through Pittsfield, there've been some really great, um, there's been a great campaign around NRCAN, um, which I know is not exactly the same thing, but it's really putting a face to the opioid crisis and really trying to humanize it and help, uh, people, you know, not be, um, as, uh, like to be aware of this crisis and to not be scared of it, to educate themselves about what they can do to help keep someone alive. Um, so, you know, I think that that's, it's, uh, behavioral health, again, it's, it's one of those things where we're losing people, you know, we don't have enough mental health providers, like, you know, whenever, uh, I hear from like the federal government, like, we need more mental health providers, like, yeah, we do, are we paying them enough? Are we compensating them so that they want to stay in the field? Um, it's, it's one of those professions, again, that can have really high burnout, you know, and, um, and so, while we need those people, absolutely, I think that some of the interesting conversations that, um, Vivek Murka are, um, um, at the federal level, he's our, sort of, I think he's our sort of general, um, you know, talking about loneliness and, and he just, like, sort of lower level softer ways through, you know, again, town events and picnics and neighborhood, you know, uh, block parties and just, you know, knocking on the door of the neighbor, like, there's a lot of other things that we can be doing that maybe aren't professionalized, that can help bring people into a sense of community and maybe help, you know, mitigate turning to, uh, all our drugs for, um, support.
That's a great, great point, and two follow up comments, the NRCAN box, we actually have one here at the, at the senior center out in the parking lot. So we have that, and then we have a wonderful Dalton Day where we had, how many residents come? Almost a couple of hundred at least through that, but to the loneliness point, um, how can we support our senior center program and things of that nature? Um, but then my final comment, and then turn it to the board, is that this is very timely because the board's going to meet in a few weeks around our strategy, and so we can incorporate this into that conversation as well.
That's great.
Any other comments from the board?
Well, it's, it's good to see, uh, these ideas, um, you know, being presented in a concrete way. I think it affirms what a lot of people maybe assume are some issues, um, that need to be addressed, and I appreciate the work. Um, it'll help focus our conversation in a few weeks.
Yep.
Particularly want to see, uh, uh, more housing, uh, in Dalton, particularly senior housing, uh, as a priority that I'd like to address, so. Um, that's definitely, uh, very evident in this report that there's a big need for that, for sure.
Yeah, I would, I would highly suggest I, I'll sign up for Google Alerts for topics that interest me, so like rural housing and things like that. Um, and you'll see some really interesting things happening in other states, uh, in the nation I just shared today, um, with our executive director and our housing program, in the state of Georgia, there, they just out, their legislature just allocated like $37 million to rural housing, and, um, there's an initiative and it's loans and grants, and there's a whole program around it. You know, again, I haven't, like, gotten into the weeds of it, but, you know, hey, if the state of Georgia thinks a town of 2,000 people is worth, you know, giving a million dollars to, to figure out some infrastructure improvements and other solutions, like why maybe Massachusetts can too. Um, so, you know, these are things, again, um, if you want, uh, we don't have, I certainly don't have all the answers and, and, you know, nobody does. Um, but, you know, there are smart people around the country or creative people around the country and other places, um, who are coming with different models and different ideas, and I think it's a great way to just, you know, keep your finger on the pulse of like what's happening, um, around the world or, or, uh, and around the country.
Great, thank you, Wally. Wally, the, uh, the select board here, we usually have a way of letting our audience participate, especially after a presentation. So we have a question from the audience, and just your name and address again.
From the audience.
From the audience, yep.
Todd Logan, 28 Curtis, can you hear me okay?
Uh, yeah.
So, just a quick question, I had the opportunity to go through the PowerPoint, um, and one of the things I wondered about was, um, I don't know if it, if it is even something Dalton can do anything about, but the biggest crisis that my wife and I have and several of our friends have who live in the area is that we don't have access to healthcare, we have to drive to Springfield to see specialists or wait four months to see somebody, maybe here, because of the number of people who've retired or left the area or just the overload. And I also know people in healthcare here, work in healthcare, who say they're working double shifts, they're totally stressed, there's rotating, like, traveling nurses who come who don't even stay their full gig because they get so stressed because they're so overwhelmed. So is that, is that something that you looked at or saw evidence of or that Dalton can even, uh, you know, uh, work on? Is there anything that we can do, uh, at the town level for that?
Um, I mean, we definitely talked about that in the report, no question. Um, and again, it's interesting because it dovetails a little bit with the immigrant issue, um, there's a really high number. If you look at the percentage of, like, doctors and dentists, um, that come from immigrant communities, it's, you know, much higher than their representation in the general public. So, I, you know, I think, um, making it clear to, uh, people outside the community that you are welcoming immigrants and immigrant, um, uh, healthcare providers. Um, you may have to do like a walking tour, a listening tour, a welcome to our community, um, recruitment effort, um, at a local level to graduates, you know, people who are graduating from programs to say, you know, come to Dalton, think about Dalton. I, I, this is, we're getting, now getting into like a level of, uh, knowledge, it's like above my pay grade. Um, you know, I, I come from New York City and I know, like, there, they had, used to have, but, I, maybe they still have it, they probably still have it, I think they still have it. Um, where, like, if you were a firefighter, a police officer, a teacher, now, not necessarily a doctor, but if you were, certainly if you were a civil servant, um, there were like lower cost loans for you for mortgages and things like that. That was a way to, you know, increase, um, the, uh, bringing in, you know, high quality, uh, civil servants to a community. Um, and I don't know why, um, there's not something like, uh, the loan, you know, there are loan repayment programs for medical providers that, you know, will send them to rural Alaska or, you know, a tribal community or something like that, I, you know, my guess is like, we don't look small enough to qualify, um, for those kinds of medical payback programs, but, you know, I don't know, maybe the town comes up with a way, this is again, above my pay grade, so please forgive me, and there's like how you, how you do this legally and through your, your, you know, town's budget and taxes and all of that, um, you know, do you give a $30,000, you know, bonus to, uh, someone to come to the community to be your local dentist? I don't know. Um, but it's some, to my mind, it's got, it's some combination, marketing, you know, you've got to market yourself to especially like new grads and people who are, you know, not sure where they're gonna land yet, and you have to have those people, you know, come to a community that, where it doesn't necessarily look like them, and make it clear, like, nope, we want you here, and I know we're gonna figure out how you're gonna get the groceries you need and, uh, all. out how you're gonna get the groceries you need and Albany is just an hour away, but we're gonna, we're gonna make it worth your while to be here. We're gonna, um, you know, again, we can't necessarily match the salary you're gonna get in Albany, but we're gonna, we're gonna essentially make it up to you in some other way that makes it worth your while that you're gonna want to come here. I mean, and honestly, just, I think like all of us, you know, just put yourself in the shoes of that person. If you come out of school with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of medical school debt or dental school debt, um, how do you, how do you make a case to that person that you should, of all the places you could go in the country, why should you come to Dalton? And I, and I, maybe it's a focus group of doctors, you know, to like brainstorm answers to that question. Again, maybe it's not just you, maybe it's, again, a lot of people in the region sort of brainstorming that kind of focus group, but that's, you know, the answers I don't think would surprise you. They would be things like, again, I can't support my family or pay back my loans with what I'm gonna make here. Um, I don't see anyone who's like me, or I don't, there's no grocery for me to get the food that my family likes or the church or mosque or Hindu temple that I normally would worship at with my community. I don't see them. Um, you know, yes, it's safe, yes, there's nice outdoor things, but these are my conundrums, you know? And/or there's no, and/or there's no housing that I can, I can afford. So those are kind of my not rapid scientist answer.
Thank you.
Great. It's a great answer. Good. Work in healthcare, you're spot on on the recruitment of international physicians and nurses and things of that nature.
I think too, you know, again, with the broadband project that I'm gonna be starting on, you know, we do also need to expand our, I mean, of course, you know, we're all familiar with walking into a doctor's office and having them take their blood pressure and temperature and all that, but, you know, maybe, again, the field of telehealth is also changing and expanding so that we can do a better job of, you know, maybe we bring people to like a center where they do get some basic, like your blood pressure, your weight, blah, 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 but then they get connected with the best doctor in Boston or whoever to, you know, do an over, uh, over Zoom kind of analysis and evaluation, but we make that somehow, you know, we, we lower the barriers to that kind of telehealth experience and make that feel, um, like it's productive.
Very big opportunity in that space for all, all communities, I think, across the country and Massachusetts specifically, especially with diabetes and hypertension management and control for sure. But it'd be interesting when we look at, back to your point, Bob, about the Dalton Grow Committee, to understand what our stock is of available buildings and locations and things of that nature. We have a great group of folks in Grow Dalton and, uh, and what's the other committee that, as far as bringing new businesses in? D-C-R-A or D-C something?
D-R-A.
D-R-A? Dalton Re-Redevelopment, so Authority or Association?
Authority.
Authority, yeah. But yeah, so this is very good. Penny, Mark?
Good.
Bob?
Good.
Tom, anything else you want to add? Okay. All right, this was excellent, Wiley. Thank you so much. I look forward to the next time of chat, for sure.
All right, take care.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, acceptance, acceptance of second quarter franchise fee for Dalton Community Cable Association.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, accept the, uh, this is a quarterly franchise fee for the second quarter of thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents from Charter Communications, the Dalton Community Cable Association.
Motion is or second?
Second.
Is motion second in discussion? Hearing none, on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Discussion on Town Hall Event for Residents. Mr. Ochsman?
Uh, this is something that you proposed to be on the agenda.
I did?
Would that be?
Oh, I know what that was. That was like a tour of the new, all the renovation stuff we've done in the attic and the this and the that, so. We just spent a half million dollars on what? What does it look like?
Yeah, well, and, uh, and open house.
Yeah, open house of sorts or things of that nature. I think that was, I think I just kind of did that email communication to you and Alyssa. Or maybe a tour for, for our press to do a story on it or whatnot so folks can, folks can see what it looks like, yeah.
We can, but.
Yeah, I'll go up there as long as there's no more bats.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
But anybody ideas on that? Are you objections or? Okay. Discussion on Community Volunteer Appreciation Day. This was one from, um, I know where this one, I'm sorry, guys, this one came in from a resident. That's a volunteer and thought it would be nice to do an appreciation day or luncheon for all of our volunteers. So maybe we can have, um, just defer that over to our trustee assistant Alyssa and the, um, cultural, cultural council, maybe, to help us?
Alyssa and?
The cultural council?
Uh, cultural.
Oh, they're volunteers. That would be kind of silly to have volunteers organize their own volunteer appreciation. So maybe Alyssa can?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll come up with some, uh, some options for that.
Okay.
I'd definitely be in support of that. I don't know. If we'd have opportunity to do it before the weather changes, maybe something outdoors even, again.
That'd be nice.
If we could pull something together in time.
A little picnic out here in the grass.
Barbecue. That could definitely be appreciated. Or you can do it at Town Hall and combine it with the Town Hall Event for Residents.
Private in the attic.
Yeah. I, I like the outdoors.
Yeah.
See, this is what happens when Alyssa kind of helps out with the Dalton Day. She gets all these other event coordinators. She's gonna be an event coordinator.
I would have wanted to do more.
Yeah, so. All right. Um, so the bar and property purchase and sale agreement is next.
Yeah, we, uh, we got the signature of the, uh, of the buyer. Once, once we sign it, we let, um, the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources know that starts a sixty-day clock ticking, and after that, it's all done. This is really the last step the town has to take.
And we, we already voted on this, so we don't need to vote again, right? Just need to sign it.
Right, just need to sign it.
Yeah, and then just the date of the agreement needs to be adjusted accidentally.
Yeah, if you could write the date of your, yeah.
Okay. So today is what, September?
Eleventh.
Oh, that's right, thank you. And the next is to set the date for the Select Board Strategy Session. Again, my apologies to the board for the snafu and the, uh, the prior date. And we were, Dan, myself and Tom were discussing, kind of trying to get this all coordinated. And I think we're, we're targeting the morning, so we don't have to kind of break up a day on a Saturday. Any, any preference? Is that okay, of a Saturday morning or like nine till twelve?
That, that works for me. I don't want this to go on the whole day.
Yeah, no.
I don't think we want.
Three hours should be plenty.
Alternatively, we could choose, uh, an off Monday.
Yeah.
And do it in the evening too. I mean, I don't think you're necessarily bound to a Saturday.
Yeah, well, no. Do you like a six to nine or?
That works.
There's another option, a six to nine on a Monday or a nine to twelve on a Saturday.
I'd rather do it on a Monday.
You'd do it on a Monday?
Yeah, you're working?
Yeah. Second, three days now.
You're on days now, okay.
You're on days?
Yeah.
All right. That's, I think that's what we're avoiding at night first off and then now you should.
That works better for me.
An off Monday at a six to nine would just fine, I think.
Yeah, that works.
All right.
That's better than a Saturday morning.
Absolutely.
So our next board meeting is?
Twenty fifth. Twenty fifth of September.
You want to do that following Monday?
The October second.
Let's see, five with me. A second here. I don't know what Mr. Boyle's ability is, but, oh, we'll have, uh, yeah, that, that could work, you know? Uh, let's see, so we got the twenty-fifth is the next Select Board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
The second. In October, is it this, the regular Select Board meeting is the sixteenth and the thirtieth?
That would be correct, yeah.
So it's gonna be a second, I'll back forward.
I think tentatively that's fine with me if everyone else is in.
Let's just stick with schedule.
Okay. All in favor for October second?
Aye.
All right, time is six to nine or does that want to go like a little hour early?
Six to nine's fine.
I think six to nine's fine.
Okay. Yeah, great. Awesome, thank you, Wiley. That was easy. Town Manager Update. Mr. Ochsman?
Uh, all offices are back in the Town Hall. The Town clerk moved back in the Town Hall on August third. Unfortunately, we were not able to have the offices painted as there was not enough time to go through the procurement process and get it and then back into their office. Uh, we weren't able to take, uh, off a month from our bank lease and so save thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's good.
By getting out a month early. We may be requested to lease the parking lot in the future. The Sun Seeny Animal Shelter that we currently use to house our stray animals closed on eight thirty-one, and we'll be using the Town Hall basement. At the Town Hall, we look at our options. An outside kennel would of course cost money, and we will be monitoring noise and odor and assessing the current situation as time goes by.
And just for the folks at home, that basement actually has, it's an old jail cell. Uh, so it actually has the cell cages for the dogs and it's, it's just so you can separate them as well. So it's just not, it's not basement, it's actually a cell here, but it's really nice. So it's like, it's like going back to the eighteen hundreds in those cells though. It's really, it's interesting.
Based on the July Select Board meeting discussion, I forwarded the topic of parking in Pine Grove Park to the traffic commission. Dalton Day was, this starts off, this includes things I was gonna report on on August fourteenth.
Oh, that's right, yes, yeah.
Uh, Dalton Day was a great success with many people attending and commenting favorably. I understand the cultural council would like to continue the event, will be considering various funding methods. The recent event was supported by an ARPA mini grant at sixty-five hundred dollars. Options so far include another bridge year of ARPA funding, developing a proposal for the town operating budget, producing a program with sponsored advertisements, and having I finally closed out the Walker Brook Grant on July twenty-sixth, and I'm working with the Town Planner and NEMA to prepare for a FEMA grant for building resilient infrastructures in communities, or BRIC, which has taken the place of the old pre-disaster mitigation grant program. We can start the bidding process for an engineering company to take care of the grant submission, the final engineering, construction bidding, and construction oversight. I just, uh, we just received plans, as you heard from Bud, uh, for the town garage heat pumps this week, uh, and we'll seek quotes or go out and bid, um, depending on the expected cost, I believe, we will be able simply to, uh, look at some quotes, which would be great. Uh, we're also expecting to hear soon about two grant proposals for garage insulation. Uh, the Healy Driscoll Administration will be having a series of listening sessions on further possible modifications to state law, a kind of municipal modernization act part three. We do not have dates for those yet, uh, but I expect they will be in October and November and possibly go on later. Uh, there is an item on the Department of Public Utilities docket for revising the current system of the community aggregation. Our provider, Colonial Power, is concerned and will be drafting a letter for input to the DPU. The Mass Municipal Association seems somewhat less concerned but is also on top of the issue and providing comments as they sponsor Constellation Energy as a municipal electricity We received, uh, again about sewer, we received two bids for sewer system rehabilitation. Ty &amp; Von are assessing the bids and will provide a recommendation for awarding the bid perhaps this week. Uh, depending on the winner, the construction will cost either about four hundred seventy thousand dollars or five hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Both figures well short of the approximately six hundred ten thousand dollars we have available after the engineering costs are subtracted. This means we could have an additional eighty-four thousand to one hundred forty thousand dollars, uh, to either not take from sewer stabilization or reallocate from ARPA funds, um, based on, uh, decision earlier tonight on paving needs. We also just received engineering information for heat pumps at the town garage. Uh, we hope to get it installed well before winter. Uh, the Emergency Management Director hosted a meeting on Friday regarding the South Street Bridge with Mass D.O.T., the train carrier CSX, and Representative Pig Notelli, Senator Mark's office was unable to attend. The bridge has been struck about twenty-six times over the past four years. Both CSX and Mass D.O.T. agreed to gather information for the town to help us decide how to move forward.
Excellent, excellent work by them. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
That's what I have for now.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, future agenda items. Can you hear none? Items not anticipated forty-eight hours before the meeting?
Joe, I have one. This weekend, Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall will be in Dalton at the American Legion, September fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth from nine AM to nine PM. Looking for the, from the board for proclamation that for this to be the Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall Weekend in Dalton. So if we can get somebody to type that up, if we can vote on that, and I, if I have to bring it to you guys to get it signed off, I'll do that.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Motion?
About second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Great idea.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic idea.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark. Anything else? Okay, remarks to Select Board?
Just, just want to reiterate, it's this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the American Legion on North Street for the, uh, the Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall will be in town from nine AM to nine PM.
Great, thank you. Uh, announcements, annual car permits, bags, stickers, recycling only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the Town Manager's Office. Next is your electricity bill too high. The town is contracted with Colonial Power to provide an electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a large customer base for negotiations, which has results in prices significantly lower than current ever sourced prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more detail or to opt in or opt out, visit the town's website or call the Town Manager's Office. Next, Dalton Housing Authority is seeking a volunteer to fill a vacant seat on its board. Must be a resident of Dalton. Please call four one three six eight four fourteen seventy for more information. Our next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM at the Senior Center with an option for remote participation. With that covered, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you, Dalton, and good night.